I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Number one on our agenda, Southern Auto Service 20 Wayne Avenue. Notice is hereby given that the zoning board of the Village of Suffering will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, July 18, 2024 at 7:10 p.m. or as soon thereafter as possible at the Southern Village Hall, 61 Washington Avenue, Suffering, New York by Southern Auto Service 20 Wayne Avenue, Suffering, New York 10901, represented by Val Samo, Burns, Cipriani, and Ellsworth, 16 Chestnut Street, Suffering, New York 10901, seeking to reverse an administrative interpretation of the building inspector in which he determined that an intended perfect use of the parking lot for storage of vehicles for sale is not permitted at the site. The premises affected is situated on the north side of Wayne Avenue and is approximately 40 feet of Chestnut Street. The property is listed on the Village of Suffering in town in Ramaco Tax Mass, Section 54.27-1.
All right, so that matter, correct me if I'm wrong, Melissa, is being adjourned at the applicant's request, right?
That's correct.
All right, so that matter is open and now adjourned to, what's the next date? The public hearing is adjourned.
October 17.
So it doesn't have to be re-noticed? Since we opened the hearing and it's being adjourned at their request.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Was it a motion by Carrie maybe, and second by Andrew?
Give some love to that end of the table.
I have a little bias.
Who is it, second by?
Andrew. Our second on our agenda is LD Holdings LLC, 99 Washington Avenue, Z2024-04. Notice is hereby given that the zoning board of the Village of Suffering will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, August 22, 2024 at 7:03 p.m. or as soon thereafter as possible at the Southern Village Hall, 61 Washington Avenue, Suffering, New York 10901, by the app, Zoom 99 Washington Avenue, Suffering, New York 10901, rent represented by Sarine and Baum LLC, 155 North Main Street, New York 10956, seeking an administrative interpretation for Section 266-54 of the zoning code. Premises affected, this situation is situated on the west side of Washington Avenue and is approximately 15 feet north of Hoyton Place. The property is listed on the Village of Suffering in town in Ramaco Tax Mass, as Section 54.51-2.
Before you proceed. The next one is 20 Sagamore.
Okay, we're gonna, sorry Paul, was it longer? We're gonna skip that one. We're gonna go to 20 Sagamore Avenue.
Now you're first.
Thank you.
I'm gonna recuse myself.
All right, notice is hereby given that the zoning board of the Village of Suffering will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, August 22, 2024 at 7:05 p.m. or as soon thereafter as possible at the Southern Village Hall, 61 Washington Avenue, Suffering, New York 10901, on an appeal by Louis Rosenbaum M. Sagamore, Suffering, New York 10901, to permit the use variance for the construction and maintenance of a 10 by 24 foot accessory structure. The proposal of such an appeal required the variance from the requirements section 266-15G-1C, in which the floor area of each accessory structure shall not be more than 100 square feet, as well as variance in some requirements of section 266-23, column 6, 7, and 8. Side yard required 20 feet to propose by total slide, by 40 to 20.
We have, we all have this.
Rear yard 40 to 50. The premises affected is situated on the north side of Sagamore Avenue and is approximately 400 feet east of Stockton. The property is listed on the Village of Suffering in town in Ramaco Tax Mass, as Section 5579-1.
Chairman, can I just get a few? We have a student here from the local high school, government class, and he can't hear you, so he asked.
Can't we sleep?
Any, what we, go ahead, wanna speak?
I don't have anything to add yet.
Wanna raise, oh, raise your right hand, you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, to help your God.
Yes.
You do?
I do.
So, just so we're clear, they were here last time and there was a question with respect to, that actually the applicant brought up on maximum development coverage and all of the other items. There's been a few back and forths with the Building Department determination, so the Building Department is indicating this needs the variance, one from 266-15G-1C, which provides that the maximum size of an accessory structure would be 100 square feet, so that's one variance. And then the others, the newer one is the development coverage, and that's, what's required is 25% with the addition of this accessory structure and other items on the property. It's, they're proposing 27.7, so again, 27.7 instead of 25. And then, we had a bit of a discussion about whether or not it required side yard, total yard, or rear yard variances. Again, that's more of a thing in terms of the book, so to speak, it doesn't change any of the existing circumstances there, but if you, the feeling was, if the requirement was that the accessory structure was, needed a variance, that it would then revert to the bulk table, and that's why it would need those additional side yard, total yard, rear yard variances, although, again, reasonable minds might differ about that, but it is on with those variances, so that's, that's what it's there for. Did anybody have any questions about the addition or what came in? Can you clarify again the positioning of the shed?
Yeah, it's, it's on the plan where it's gonna be, it's the, the back northeast corner.
Thank you. All right, just so we're clear, the plan is a survey, I can't read this, does somebody, do you have the date of the survey?
That's Paul Gedansky's site plans.
I'm just trying to identify it.
Tell you when he sent us the email.
It's usually in the right-hand corner.
9:5.
9:5.
9:524, okay, thank you.
Down here.
Right, so it would be based upon that survey, and if the board were to grant it, conditioned on the location of the shed being where it is. Anybody have any further questions?
No.
Anybody have any questions?
I do not.
Let's see if anyone from the public wants to speak.
Anybody from the public wanna speak? No, close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Motion to open and motion to close.
So the motion to open is by?
Lisa.
Lisa, second by?
Eric. Bruce. Bruce.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the motion to close is by?
Lisa.
Lisa.
Bruce.
Second by Bruce, all in favor?
Aye.
Everybody, sorry.
You slackers better get on board.
Now we go. Thank you.
Yes, and this is a type 2 action under secret, so no further environmental review is required.
Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, grant the variance.
Variances.
The variances.
Second.
You might wanna take a roll call.
Board member Wilson.
Yay.
Board member Simon.
Nay.
Board member Adwar.
Yes.
Board member Zosowski is abstaining, and for chairman testament.
In favor, yeah.
Yes. So the motion is approved with conditions.
The variances are granted with the conditions, it's located where it's shown on the map.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so Paul's case is ready to go.
No, here's number two.
Well, you already read it through.
Yeah, I already read it.
We go back to Paul, right, we're good?
Yep.
All right, Mr. Baum.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Paul Baum, I'm an attorney with Sirajin &amp; Baum, 155 North Main Street, New City, New York. So we're here on the appeal of 99 Washington LD Holdings LLC, to get this board's interpretation with regard to certain violations that were issued by the building inspector regarding the use of the building. The building is located right down the block here at 99 Washington Avenue, it's a two-story building, there are three tenants in the building, there's two tenants on the first floor, one tenant on the second floor. The tenant that's on the second, uh, first floor.
I'm sorry, what'd you say, two tenants?
Two tenants on the first floor. Two tenants on the first floor, and one tenant on the second floor. So one of the tenants that's on the second floor is 99 LD Truck Leasing, and they're involved in leasing of small, like, type work vans, they own the vans, they lease them out, they were issued a violation by the building inspector for storage of vans on the lot, so the first thing that, we're here to seek an interpretation from the board is, our issue is that we are a leasing office, and as an accessory use to a leasing office, we can store some vans on the property, and that's perfectly normal and customary and incidental to the use of the office, for a leasing office. The other issue that we're here for is, they were also giving violations for having signs in the window, the front door, as well as on the front facade of the premises, I believe I gave you pictures in my narrative and with the application. This use, the professional office, we have a CO for professional office that was issued in 2022, the, let's start with the signs, because I think they're the most easiest, straightforward. So, we were given a violation for no sign plan approval, we have an automobile retail dealer sign on the front of the building, and we also have small business identification in the glass of the front door of the building. It just identifies the occupants of the building and indicates whether they're on the first floor or the second floor. The notice of violation that was issued by the building inspector referenced them as advertising signs, but they're not really advertising signs, they're business identification signs. So, in your code, Section 228-26C9, or I should just say 228-26C, listing signs that are exempt from requirements of permits, and number nine of that code exempts a sign permit that's incidental to a professional office that does not exceed six inches high or two feet long, and that indicates the name of the tenant. We feel that we fall within that, if you've seen the picture, I have another one that I can provide to the board. But here's the picture, signs, talking about, they're written on the glass window, 99 feet, six inches high, 99 feet, two feet wide, and they just describe the tenants that are in the building. So, we felt that that was an improper violation, and we wrote a letter to the building inspector advising him that we think we fall under these exemptions, and he said, no, you don't. So we filed this appeal for you, this board, to interpret the code and decide whether or not those signs fall under Section 228-26C9 as being exempt. As I indicated, we do have a CO for a professional office at the building that was issued on March 4, 2022, and the only signs with regard to the business identification of those three signs, and we feel they are exempt, and we do not need a sign permit for it, and therefore, the violation was issued in error, so we ask that the board rule that they are exempt under the sign ordinance. The second appeal with regard to the signs, if the board will see there's a registered motor vehicle dealer sign on the facade of the building, that sign is required by law pursuant to Department of Motor Vehicle Regulations, 15 NYCRR, 78.26, and that section of the law requires any company or any individual that's a dealer, they're required to display signs on their window, lettering, or on the facade of a permanent nature on the front of the premises occupied by the place of their business, and the signs are regulated, they must be three feet by two feet depending upon the type of sign, it has to bear a certain color, I think dealer signs are red, inspection signs may be green, but if you look around town, almost every business that deals with motor vehicles, whether does inspections, sells a vehicle, repairs vehicles, has a sign up. And I did a FOIL request, and I went down to the village hall, and I reviewed all the files before the planning board for any of those businesses that, that have these signs, to see whether or not there was any sign approval issued by the planning board, and not one of them contained an application or an approval by the planning board for those signs. So, we think that they are exempt, other businesses have them, they haven't obtained a permit, and we feel that they're exempt under a different section of the exemption in your zoning code, and that section is the same 2826C, but it's Section 7, so signs that are required to be maintained or posted by law or governmental order, rule, or regulation are exempt, as well as signs required by duly constituted governmental bodies or their agencies where such signs are established in the interest of the safety, convenience, and welfare of the general public. Now, the DMV requires these signs to be posted by dealers, inspection facilities, and so forth, as a public interest, so that people will know who they're dealing with and know that they're licensed. So, that DMV sign that's on the building, we feel is also an exempt sign, and falls within Section 22826C1 and/or C7 as an exempt sign. So again, we feel that the violation issued by the building inspector was not proper, and that these are exempt signs, and we request this board to find that they fall with under those exemptions in the zoning code and are exempt from sign plan approval. The third issue while we're here is a second notice of violation that was also issued by the building inspector, charging the applicant with storage of vans in the rear lot. And I have Mr. Abe Zuntz here, who's the principal of the tenant, and he can explain to the board how they operate, they do van leasings, they also do some sales of the vans there, and hence they have the retail dealer sign, but they're really an office, they're a leasing office, but they maintain some vehicles on site for leasing long-term to third parties, and our position is that such use is considered an accessory use. Your code defines accessory use as an use which is customarily incidental and subordinate to the principal use on the lot and located on the same lot therewith. So, our position is, he's a leasing office, and it's customary for a leasing office to store some vans on site to lease out to members of the public, and that is incidental to the main use of the office for communicating, dealing with paperwork, talking with people, posting things on the internet, which is the way most of their transactions occur. It's not like they're a used car lot, people come by and tour the lot and see what's going on, they have one on there, they, they'll have communications with somebody that's interested, and they'll do the paperwork, and either the person will come pick up the van, or the van will be delivered to that person, but I'll let Mr. Zuntz testify as to his business operations and answer any questions that the board may have. So, our position is that because this use is accessory, it is not a violation, it's permitted in connection with the lawful use of the business as a professional office. And if you look at your code, your code provides in the table of bulk regulations that parking is a permitted accessory use, in the, this is in the 2R5 district, by the way. So, that's the nature of our application, I'll bring Mr. Zuntz up, and he can testify as to how they operate, and we'd be glad to answer any questions that the board may have regarding the application. Thank you.
Mr. Zuntz.
Raise your right hand, swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, to help your God.
I do.
What's your name, sir?
What's your name?
Legally, my legal name is Avraham Zuntz, but you can call me Abe.
Can you say it so we can?
Say it loud.
Sorry, my legal name is Avraham Zuntz.
How do you spell it?
A-V-R-O-H-O-M, as in Mary.
And Z-U-N-T.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
So, can you describe how many vans you have, how they're used, how you deal with the public, how you arrange for leasing of these vans to members of the public?
We generally own about 15 vans at a time.
Can you speak louder?
I'm sorry, we own about 15 vans at a time, we, we have about 10, I think, here at the property right now, we have, more vans are on the road, but that we keep an inventory, it's about 10 to 15 vans, we pick up most of our customers at trade shows or online, and generally, it's not a car lot where people are coming to look at vans and decide if I want a blue one or a red one, it's all done mostly emails, phone calls, and it's commercial customers, so they know what they want before they get it, they say, I need a van that's, you know, a Transit 350, a Transit 250, I need it refrigerated, you know, what do you have available, how much is it per month, and that's how our transactions are conducted. If they want to see the van, most of the time it's just a picture, we say, here we go, this is what it looks like, the, most of them are new, we have a couple that are not so new, and that is pretty much the business. They do come back off lease, and when they come back off lease, on occasion, we sell them to the public, a lot of times they just sell them online at the auction. That's pretty much it, that's mostly the business.
Anybody else?
That's it? Does anybody have any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
How many spots do you have, sir?
I think the building has 20 spots, if I'm not mistaken, I'm not sure myself, I apologize.
What'd you say, 20?
I think so.
Thank you.
May I ask, what is the breakdown, how many spots does each business control?
So, two out of the three businesses are my businesses, so we have about two employees that come on a regular basis that park their personal cars there, the tenants, the other tenant, we never agree to give them parking, but I think they do use it, they also have like two people, so that's like four cars on a regular basis.
Have you ever had a problem with parking there, or are there adequate spaces for your tenants as well as?
There's, there's usually adequate space, at one point we did have too many, so we moved some of our trucks off to another location, we have trucks in Brooklyn, our location, and then we use another space in Jersey.
Anybody have any questions?
Which, which zone is the houses?
Right, so Mr. Baum mentioned it's in a 2R5 zone, which does not permit the professional offices, this received, and correct me if I'm wrong, just on the facts, this received a variance back in 2000 for the operation of a professional office in a 2R5 zone.
That is correct, it was 21st April, June, 2000, is the ZBA notice of determination permitting it to be used for a professional office.
And let me ask you, I know you said that the building inspector, the code enforcement officer gave you a violation, and you're interpreting that, did you get a subsequent interpretation from the building inspector, or, okay, just that one, okay.
Just the one violation, we wrote them a letter and asked them to consider it, and just as we're asking you before we came here, and their decision was, we're not reconsidering it, we're not changing our decision.
Okay.
You can go to the zoning board.
But you didn't, did you get anything in writing on that, or?
On the second thing?
Yeah.
It's just an email from Mr. Starkey that said, we're not reconsidering, but nothing of substance, anything of substance in the, in the notice of violation that was submitted with my application.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
We'll get to you in a minute, okay, sir?
Any other questions on the board, before we open the public portion?
I'm trying to see, I mean, he's readily admitting that.
Well, why don't you get more, why don't we get more from the public?
Okay.
Okay, you wanna close?
Well, actually, I do have a question before we go to the public. Can you define the difference between parking and storage?
Not really. Not really, I mean, I, I don't know what storage is, I guess, storage is that they're left there, not regularly used, not regularly parked, but people coming and going, that's maybe one way I would look at it, so these vans are not, you know, driven on a regular basis and come and park, once they're there, they sit there until they're leased out or until they're sold to auction, or they're sold to somebody else, so it's not like it's an ongoing situation where people are coming and going and this constant movement of cars in and out of the lot, so that might be considered storage, since they're not being used on a regular basis.
Thank you.
I wanna close this? Well, not, not close, just open the public portion.
Yeah, I'm trying to. Motion to open the public hearing, open the public portion of the hearing.
Second.
Come on up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Come on up. Raise your right hand, swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, to help your God.
Yes, I do.
Your name, address?
Ed Conklin, I got a letter, I live on Hoyton Place, kinda crowded over there right now. Who owns that building?
Well, they don't answer the questions, but if you have questions that you want them to ask?
Yeah, I'd like to know who owns the building.
Yeah, I'd like to know who owns the building of the, that's in question. You don't know?
Who's the applicant? 99 Washington LD Holdings LLC.
LD Holdings. And how many businesses are renting it out?
Well, they said, just direct the questions here.
How many businesses are using the building?
Well, he said there's 3.
There's 3. 3? And all the parking on the street on Washington Avenue accesses these buildings? Or are they for personal use for the homes that are on Washington Avenue?
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question, sir.
Who can park on the street, right? That's part of it. I would think anybody could park there at any time. Okay. You know, on the street. Because when I go out in the morning, every parking space is occupied in front of all the homes on Washington Avenue. It's not legal to park and use Boynton Place as a access to get from Orange to Washington, but people do it all the time. The homes on Boynton are all rentals, not businesses. And even the county is now renting out some of the apartments that are there. I don't know why they're doing it, but I see cars coming in with the signs on the cars saying they are there to check on the tenants. And with no parking, Boynton Place, it's limited parking in the driveways that are available. And most of the rentals, they pack them in there. So it, I'm calling to the attention of you guys that the traffic that has been added, because I walked over there, and if you're not renting a lot of vans, you've got a lot of vans in the back there occupying that space. But most of those in years past were doctors' offices, and there was no legal parking on Washington Avenue. People came and got, and they basically used the homes, you know, for patient parking and that sort of thing. My point is, it's getting crowded. Crowded to the point that, you know, a personal home, a rental, if the guys don't show up to do the yard, plow the snow in the winter, it's becoming a problem. And opening this up to 3 rentals, one of which is renting out trucks, I walked by because I didn't realize when that house became available that they were selling to multiple businesses. And the house in question with the vans, you actually can't see the backyard. The vans are lined up, they probably have to move 2 or 3 of them just to get a particular van out of there in the back. The bad part is, it's right up against multiple homes to the south with a lot of families and kids running around there. Not that you should care, but it seems to me that we're being very accommodating to the landlords in most cases, and nobody really cares about who they rent the apartments out to. But now that I see that the county is renting out rooms, and I don't know if they're immigrants, if they're young people that are in trouble and really need, you know, some assistance, they're all good neighbors, everything's there, but a lot of times it's a fight for car space, parking, and there's a lot of little kids now. I thought that generation was behind me when all of mine graduated from the schools here and moved on, but every one of those apartments now has kids in them. So it needs to be looked at, and it just surprised me that you had 3 offices, or 3 businesses renting out that house. Food for thought, some consideration, you know, it's difficult. If you've got a guy picking up garbage, nobody else is going to be able to get through that street. Used to have signs at the one end warning that there's kids that are in the street, and as they grew up, those signs have disappeared. So you really have kind of left it. It was one of the original ones that they dug up and put in the new gas veins, so the street's in good shape, it's just, it's the people part. It's crowded.
Sir, you're going to have to wrap it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's basically it. Anybody else want to speak? No? All right, you want to close, motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Second.
Second, Lisa.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
I have a question, the vehicles that are parked there, do they have commercial plates?
Most of them are not registered at the moment, they have no plates.
What changes what?
What'd you say, most are not registered?
Most of them are not, no. When a customer leases them, we register them and deliver the vehicle.
Oh, I see, yeah.
So the lease is short-term or long-term?
The shortest would be 6 months.
I'm sorry?
6 months would be the shortest lease.
Okay.
How many of your cars in the daytime are parked on those streets?
I think 0, actually, none.
None?
There are only, there are 3 businesses, it sounds like a lot, but there are 4 employees in total that actually work there on a daily basis. They park in the back, and it's not the type of businesses that have foot traffic either. The other business is a loan office, they organize loans for commercial, commercial loans for businesses.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion or I'd like to discuss this with counsel in executive session if you...
Okay, okay, we're going to, all in favor adjuting for an executive session?
I'll second that.
Aye.
We're going to have an executive session, so everybody has to leave the auditorium.
Well, we can go, we can go.
Well, we could go out, you stay.
Sure.
Motion to make, to come out of the executive session?
I'll second.
Who's first? I make the motion.
Okay. All right. Bruce.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you want to have anything else, or...
Not unless the board has any other questions. I guess Mr. Conklin made some comments about, you know, a lot of traffic, a lot of cars, parking on rentals, we're not residential rental properties, we don't park in the street, we don't have a lot of traffic as we indicated, there's only probably 4 cars that come in and out of there on a daily basis, so there's not a lot of constant cars coming and going as you might find with a real estate office or a doctor's office or a lawyer's office. Sounds like he was just concerned because these residential rentals took up a lot of the on-street parking spaces, and it was getting crowded, but it's totally unrelated. The one thing that he did say that I thought was good is, you can't see the vans, you know, so they're really not disrupting the neighborhood, you can't see them from the front, they're tucked in behind the building and they're hidden. So other than that, I really have nothing else to say. Thank you.
Would you want to address the issue? So just for the board, you know, the question is, the building inspector, the building department has issued a violation saying that the use of the lot for parking vehicles, basically in the way that they're saying, is storage and is not permitted as an accessory use under the code. And again, this use would not ordinarily be permitted in that zone, but it received a variance to be in the 2R5 zone. The question that you have to determine, as the building inspector did, and whether you agree with them or not, is whether or not accessory parking means, or outdoor storage of vehicles is an accessory, is a permitted accessory use to professional office.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to uphold the determination of the building department in regards to the violations.
And based on what?
I'm sorry?
Like the reason, just the reasoning, I mean, we'll put it together in a decision for the board to decide on, but...
Based on the, not an accepted accessory use, based on the zoning, the 2R5 zoning.
And the current use is as storage, I guess.
And storage.
So that's a motion by Mr. Simon.
I second it. Maybe I'll make a motion.
You second it?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. In terms of the signs, there's 2 signs. One is the door sign. Again, I think the door sign, the 6 inches refers to the entirety of it, so that's simply going to the planning board, I don't think that would be much of an issue to go to the planning board, get permission for that door sign. And the other sign, again, it cuts both ways, it kind of indicates it's a, it is a vehicle retail or perhaps, you know, place that sells vehicles, which, again, professional office or office can be, it can be used, but, you know, that sign, again, may be permitted, as you said, without, so we'll put that as part of the decision. But I think the other, the sign, the green sign, DMV sign, that...
The board denied the accessory use.
Right.
They also denying the signs as being exempt?
No, 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 the sign on the door is not exempt, all you have to do is go to planning board, show them the sign, and they approve or disapprove. The sign on the door, that's, many businesses have to come in for that.
No, no, I understand that, but my argument was this fell under the exempt sanction and we don't need a permit, so I...
Yeah, because it is 6 inches, but it's the door, it's the entirety of the door, it's not just...
It's each individual sign is 6 and 1/2, and you're allowed 1 per tenant, so...
Yeah, well, again...
I would like to hear the board's vote with regard to that, if you're denying our appeal that they're not exempt sign, I would like for the record...
Sure. Do you want to take a vote on that or put it in the...
He's saying there's 3 on the door.
On the door sign, why don't we take a motion on that?
3 companies, so that...
Whatever you want to do on it.
Each one is 6 inches.
Whatever you want to do on the door sign.
What do you say?
Somebody want to do something?
What? What do you say?
I don't have an issue with the lettering on the door.
Okay. So you're voting that he does not...
Motion that he, that he can keep the sign on the door as it is.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then on that DMV sign, or the registered vehicle sign?
Yeah, we'll make a motion that we can keep that sign.
Okay, that's Barry.
And second?
Second.
And again, that's just with respect to the sign, doesn't grant it any particular use, you're just saying, the sign could say anything, but you're...
Aye.
As you can say.
So that decision was the DMV sign is not exempt?
No, you can keep it.
You can keep the sign.
Right.
Okay, so the signs are okay, they're exempt?
Vehicles can't be stored.
It's the accessory that's still...
Okay. All right.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your time and your consideration.
Thank you, and the board will be, a decision will be prepared, they'll vote on it next time, you don't necessarily have to come, but that's the way it goes, you know, we've got a written decision.
You have to vote on the...
So moved.
Aye.
Second, please, vote on this. Everybody say...
Aye.
Good night.
Adjourn to November...
October, October...
October 19 and add November 21st.
You say October 19?
I thought it was...
October 17.
And add November 21st.
November...
Just to close the meeting before last time.
Okay.
So to close the meeting and add November 21st. November 21st is the, November started meeting.
Motion to close the meeting.
Second.
All in favor, aye.